All order of the April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, City of Columbia City Council meeting. Dan Davis, we're going to send vacation all of stamp for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Lord, we thank you for the privilege to live in your presence and to work with you to build a better community. Help us to do right, deal fairly with all of our citizens, and give us the faith and courage to put our trust in you. In your name we pray, amen.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, we call the roll.
Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
Tutilio?
Here.
Banner?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
We've all received a copy of the March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, City Council meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes?
Um, I do have one small correction. Uh, Lockland Lineball was actually from scout pack sixteen. Not true.
Okay, we've got one correction. Any other corrections or comments? If not, they'll stand approved as corrected. I'm not aware of any communications other than those that are gonna have public comment, so I'll skip over that section and report. Uh, you received a copy of the park recreation and cemetery board meeting minutes of March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they'll be accepted as submitted. Item eight, our recognition of persons aspiring to to appear. Crystal Sambita Boggs is here, and I'm gonna let her make her presentation. Congratulations, Crystal.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so I have two races. Twas the night before five K, the Christmas one that we put on, be Tuesday, December sixth at six o'clock P M. Same course that we've been doing for all the past years. Nothing's really changing. Uh, we are renting the pavilion again at the park this year. And we found that renting the pavilion was much less expensive than renting Porta John, so. We're gonna go that route, but we are having the after-party at Birdfish again. They've already signed on to do that, and everything's just pretty much the same as usual. If you have questions on that one?
You said six P M?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Good with that, Chief? Good?
Next. Alright, and then the next one I have is not, not really my race per se. I'm presenting it on behalf of somebody else because they live an hour and a half away. Maps on there. So, um, as many of you know, my husband had a collapsed lung in January and, um, spent sixteen days in the hospital. And he is still not back to work. He doesn't have health insurance, while he has through me, but he doesn't have, um, vacation pay. He doesn't have sick pay. He doesn't have anything. And so, um, a friend of ours has decided to put on a benefit race to help him pay for his expenses that he has incurred over the past couple of months. Lori is somebody that has hired us for multiple years to time her events, and she has become a good friend of ours through the process. You can see, uh, there is a map of the course. It would start and finish out at Columbia High School. It's a out-and-back course. I have talked to, uh, Marvin Grace at the Police Department, and he is, um, I don't know if he's talked to you yet, but. So, um, he's got that looked at and said everything should be good to go on his end. Uh, there's a letter that I'm handing you that Lori wrote on our behalf and, um, the race entry form as well. So, I'm just, like I said, I'm presenting it on her behalf because I know the procedure, and she lives an hour and a half away, so. While she will be here race day, she's, it is not a convenient thing for her to come down here today. But all the same things will be in place since we are guiding her along the process, uh, making sure that there's insurance and all those different things in place.
If that's the case, then I'll make a motion that we approve both races, uh, that, uh, Crystal Sambita Boggs has presented to us this evening.
Second. Motion second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I guess I didn't say, it's May first. It's on that form, May first.
Chief, you'll work with chief on making sure that works out. Any, uh, any other comments? Dan, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Crystal, we'd all like to have a flower that you got presented to this morning.
Again?
We'd all like to have a flower that you were presented to this morning for your prestigious award.
She's just hunkered down right off of that.
I don't know. I mean, my husband nominated me, so.
Well, that was great that he did that. It's, uh, fantastic to have people from Columbia receive those things, and you are well-deserving of it.
Yeah, it it was definitely nice to see Columbia throw on the map and not have, you know, you see all these great awards for people, and it's usually somebody in Mahoning, trouble some other counties. It was really good to see Columbia out there. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jacob Sebeck.
Good evening, everybody. Um, it's good to be back with the full, uh, request tonight. Just a couple of notes from last year. After you City Council had approved the uh, request for the street fair and everything, we came back, I came back later, had a meeting with Lance and the other superintendents. And everybody came and agreed that closing down all of Main Street at noon would be the best and safest option moving forward for that, for last year. Um, and as I was up there for everything, it was a whole lot safer and easier for not just all of our city employees to get up there and do what they had to do, but also for the rides company to get a lot of their heavy, uh, lifting done without trying to fight with traffic. Um, which will be the, that would be the major change that you could see in the request, um, on here. But to start it off, we, uh, the Legion is planning on having the parade, um, on Monday, May thirtieth. Uh, parade will form on Main Street at approximately nine thirty and start at ten, lasting approximately two hours from the parade to the ceremony in the cemetery. They'll be lining up, stepping off, uh, from South Main heading east on Park Avenue to the cemetery. Item one, item two being to have the one hundred thirty-fifth street fair on September eight, nine, and ten. With, uh, street closure starting on Wednesday at noon of all South Main Street to Railroad Street. And the evening before being on a block off the triple A lot for Pissel. Then having the parade September eighth at approximately six fifteen step off. Permission to use, uh, parking lots in the park, uh, not to interfere with any football game or pavilion rentals over the weekend. And finally, I think I got everything on here for the first time. Uh, request for the waiver of the fee for fair and any weekend concession stand fees that could be imposed, which we've never had to deal with. On the additional, you'll see the closure list. Then finally, uh, the request to have the banner hung approximately mid-August, around the fifteenth, be removed at the conclusion of the fair.
Questions? I'll make a motion. We accept it as presented.
Second.
Motion second? Can't make this any harder on Jake?
I mean, you can. I'm fine with it. I mean, I don't know. Anybody says it's hard to work with you guys. I'm in here ready. It's easy. If I had it my way, we'd have a, uh, trailer. It'd be lights, water, everything.
I don't know. I'm in that trying to hawk out first to a humor of the night, Jake.
That's alright.
Any other questions? Fantastic.
Alright, thank you.
Have all this back. Um, do you have me call the roll?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Thank you very much, most of you. Turn to the manager's report and Lance, um, it turned out it's Lance Lawrence.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. So, reminder that the Columbia area Chamber of Commerce is having their annual banquet, uh, this Saturday, the ninth. Uh, I believe I actually looked at it today. They, uh, can still, um, reserve seats. Awesome. We've been talking about the progress committee and what we've done in the recent past. Uh, we, we had that on the PowerPoint from last month, but as part of, uh, one of the projects that, uh, RCAP put our name into a, um, selection board to, uh, have the City of Columbia participate in an international study on rural innovation being conducted by the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. That's O E C D. And it's, it's pretty cool. They're coming all around the world, uh, to our town on April eleventh and twelfth, and we're gonna have focus groups here in town that will look at service organizations, city and county, uh, officials, uh, theater focus group, downtown focus group, manufacturers, and education. So it'll be a, uh, fun two days of, um, back-to-back-to-back-to-back interviews, but, uh, we are going to, um, you know, kind of mix it up. We're going to go to different, uh, different places for the various meetings. And your itinerary is in your, one of your emails that were sent over the, over the weekend. So if you're interested, counsel, in any of those, uh, just let me know and, and, uh, I'll let everybody know you're coming, so. And then, um, so I think one, one person's from France, the other one's from Slovenia, and then, uh, one from Canada. Can't remember the others, and then five others from, uh, the U S from, uh, RCAP organization. So that'll be a fun couple of days. Uh, the Salem Regional Hospital has started their medical facility, and they are intending to use, uh, bonds to fund that, and we have, uh, been working with them, and I say we loosely, it was all Mark, working with, uh, with Salem Regional and Salem Hospital. And we tonight, uh, have on our agenda just acknowledgement, uh, ordinance to acknowledge that they're gonna use bonds to, uh, to, um, build that, and if you have any questions, Mark can answer them, uh, when we get to that line item. Uh, we reviewed letters of interest from the inspection services for the East Park Avenue paving project. We did give, uh, the, um, contractors notice to proceed on, uh, for April eleventh, and, uh, be about a hundred twenty-day project. And we have selected D L Z for the inspection services, and we have an ordinance on here tonight to authorize me to, uh, enter into a contract, and, uh, it is as emergency because we do have a pre-construction meeting on Friday, so. See, we also have legislation, um, is, uh, on the agenda to hire Richard Gibson. Some people call him Junior. I, I can't call anybody Junior. I just can't do it. But, um, he, uh, Richard has worked with us since two thousand seventeen, uh, and he's been a foreman. So he's has ten, ten years experience in the field, so, uh, we, I think Doug's trained him pretty well, and he knows his stuff, so we're looking forward to working with him. Uh, let's see, we'll be moving, I've, I've been saying this for the last couple of months, that we'll be moving forward, next step for the sewer assessment project on County Line Road. And, um, it did pop up, uh, since Friday that, uh, we'll be repealing last year's resolution. We needed to change it. We, uh, contacted, uh, Bond Counsel, and, uh, they recommended us doing a new one, and so we're gonna repeal that resolution. It's on the agenda for first reading. Second reading will be next meeting, and then by then we may have our new resolution to, uh, to sign and pass. Uh, there is a, uh, second reading for legislation on the agenda for pool rates and new policies. Notice that we missed, uh, something from the first reading, and I believe we're prepared to amend that, uh, tonight to add that back in there. Uh, we, uh, every year we have to do a cer- insurance survey. We, we finished that last week, and also a boundary survey, which we did annex, uh, some property in, in two thousand twenty-one, so we will be having to change, um, or change that on the maps. Uh, Street Department, uh, we've been working on, uh, finishing up the, uh, the, the corridor. If, uh, if you've seen the Columbia corridor where the students, uh, the entrepreneur class worked there in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, it's, uh, pretty cool. There's a, uh, sixty-inch monitor up there now that turns to a fish aquarium at eight o'clock at night. It's pretty cool.
It's magic.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So the, the students, they, they wanted a fish tank and, or aquarium, and they wanted to put it inside one of the businesses, um, up there. It's Salon Anthrum in the, the old bank windows, but, um, it didn't work out, so we've got them, uh, we've got them, our screen, actually, it's, it's programmed to turn to an aquarium. Other times it's, uh, just promotional videos for Columbia, and then we'll be able to, uh, keep adding through that, so, uh, really proud of that. Also, Compco's been, uh, everything that's, uh, powder-coated up there was donated by, um, um, Compco Industries in memory of, uh, Clarence Smith, and, uh, just called him last week for something else, and they're gonna, they're working to, uh, help us build that fountain that we talked about, so we should be finished up there, uh, pretty, pretty soon. We do have water feature that's coming. And, uh, just, you know, just appreciate working with the, the young entrepreneurs. We did work with them on our, um, uh, pool concessions as I, as I spoke last, the last meeting, and it's, uh, going pretty well, and we're trying to implement, uh, what they've, they've, uh, some of the changes that they recommended. And a couple of different departments have helped that, uh, you know, working on, on those projects with them, so we do appreciate, uh, their involvement. Uh, Water Department, uh, they completed the, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-one C C R, and were required to put it on our, um, on our website, and that is, uh, basically, it's a consumer conference report for the water. Talks about, uh, quality of our water. We had sixty-five locate since the last, last meeting. There was an extra week in there, but, uh, anytime that anybody digs, they, and they call utilities protection, uh, and there were sixty-five of them since March fifteenth, so. We're, uh, we're pretty busy. Uh, we did have a one, uh, valve replacement lowered to water lines. Uh, the crew is back on the West, uh, Salem Street project. Uh, we're, you know, working to, working to finish that up. And we, again, we do appreciate all the patience that, uh, the neighbors have out there, uh, on Pearl Street. That's where we're at right now. And we're, you know, in the, in the midst of, uh, making those repairs, but, uh, we should be all done with that project, I'd say, by mid-June, but, uh, other than that, it's, uh, it's going pretty well. Uh, wastewater, uh, the helped a couple of departments dig some holes using the Vector. Also, uh, we're starting an infiltration and inflow study, uh, that, that'll take a couple of months. And then the Vector, uh, sewer unit had, uh, power steering issues, and we're working on those right now. Park and Cemetery, they prepped and opened the sports courts, uh, prepping for baseball and softball season. They did pour the concrete, uh, for the new pole heater, which will be arriving, uh, pretty soon. Did work on a lot of green applications last week, multiple departments, and, uh, we've got a few more coming up, so, uh, I guess at the end of the year, we should try to quantify how many we applied for. Never really done that, but, uh, it's gonna be, I think it was five and a half million dollars last week, so, uh, it, it's gonna add up quick. Hopefully, we, uh, get some of those. Uh, Electric Department, uh, hooked up tem- temporary, uh, commercial service, installed three residential meters, and, um, working on the L A D decorative lights at the South Main Street. Noticed that they've been out, uh, seems like forever, but, uh, we're doing those one at a time. And we're just, uh, doing it a little different way than what, uh, we, we're doing it before. Can't get the same parts, uh, as we were using before, so. You'll notice those will come back on, uh, over the next month or so. And I believe that's it.
Yep. Questions for Lance? I would just like to comment real quickly, but, uh, having this, uh, this group coming in next week, it's really exciting, and, um, you know, these people are touring Dallas, New Mexico, Heimble, Arkansas, and Washington, V C, and Columbia, Ohio. So, uh, we're on the map.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think it's fantastic, and Lance deserves a lot of credit for putting this itinerary together. We're gonna keep these folks really busy, seeing all facets of our community, and, um, I think, uh, you know, it's really exciting. It should be an interesting time, and, um, you know, it's fun to share all the great things that are going on in the city. I'd like, I'd like to semi-quote Rebecca from RCAP.
Yeah.
She said, "I've seen the agendas for the other cities, and they're gonna sit in a boardroom for two days and talk about things." We ain't doing that. And we will be all over the city, so it should be fun.
And we do appreciate all that help that, um, the chamber's given, you know, calling them all, every day, and, and, um, they're helping that, and also the cultural collective is, uh, helping a lot, you know, as well as, uh, several other businesses, Compco, uh, Mexico City Grill, Birdfish, uh, Best Western, so, so, it's another group effort, yep.
Yeah, going out to the schools.
Yep, going out to the schools.
Some of the young people we're working with out there, so I think that's all great.
Yeah, I believe there's gonna be a French, the French class is coming, and there's, uh, French teacher's gonna bring a French class, and there's gonna be, uh, somebody from France there, so that'll be interesting. Thanks.
Hopefully, we'll have some French conversation.
Bet we have French fries.
Anybody up here speak French? You can, you'd be welcome to come.
Please. How about Zorvaki?
Yes. Zorvini.
Zorvini.
I don't even know what language that is personally. Okay, well, thank you very much. Thanks, Lance. Uh, next we have the bid results for Asphalt two thousand twenty-two. Any comments on that? What we need to be apprised of. And you also have in your packet the Columbia EMS report for March of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the bill list, uh, for four, five, two thousand twenty-two is in the packet. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Hearing none, we'll turn to, uh, whole business, and I'll, I'll recognize a motion to have the ordinances read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Uh, that probably should be or ordinances and resolutions.
Yeah, that's.
Because that's pretty much standing. Okay, um, Dan, we call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one one three, second reading. An ordinance setting rates for the Firestone Park Swimming Pool and repealing any other ordinances or resolution in conflict therewith.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Questions? Dan, we call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one one four, second reading. An ordinance amending section one of ordinance number twenty-one dash oh dash three one zero eight, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees of the Firestone Pool for the City of Columbia. I'd like to make a motion that we accept that with an amendment to add some language into this, into this ordinance that, uh, Lance has over there. Oh, you got the language? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's actually, uh, adding section three, item A, to the ordinance, which is already in our, our current copy. And I get, and then I'll go so, second that motion that you made.
Okay. Motion second. Any questions? Dan, we call the roll.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one one five, second reading. An ordinance setting rates of, for renting the Firestone Pool and the V I P lounge, and repealing any other ordinance or resolution in conflict therewith, outlining rental fees and policies.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions? Dan, we call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash oh dash three one one six, second reading. An ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement with the Firestone Area Swim Team to outline fees and guidelines during the swim meets and when using the pool for private swim lessons.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Dan, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tutilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Do I have a motion, uh, to consider the following, the next two ordinance is emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Dan, we call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash three, one, one, eight, emergency. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with DLZ Ohio Inc. For the purpose of providing inspection services for the design services for the Park slash Springfield slash Heck Road Way Improvement Project. PID 108, excuse me, 108703.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments on that motion? Yeah, we call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Resolution number 22 dash R dash five, nine, three, emergency. An emergency resolution approving the appointment by the city manager of Richard Gibson as electric superintendent for the City of Columbiana as of the 27th day of March 2022.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash three, one, one, nine, first reading. An ordinance approving the potential issuance for the City of Salem, Ohio of its revenue bonds pursuant to chapter 140 Ohio Revised Code to finance hospital facilities for the benefit of Salem Community Hospital located in the City of Salem, Ohio and the City of Columbiana, Ohio pursuant to section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code. Authorizing the execution and delivery of a public hospital agency's agreement and other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
I think we took it easy in marking that one.
Hey, that's okay. Just so you know, I did not write the title to that legislation you just voted on. I know it sounds like it.
Ordinance number 21 dash O dash three, one, two, zero, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Tri-County Asphalt Materials, Inc. PO Box 338, North Lime, Ohio 44452, for the purchase of asphalt.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Ordinance number 22 dash O dash three, one, two, one, first reading. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program for annual contract 018 dash 021 for sodium chloride salt.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Resolution number 22 dash R dash five, nine, four, first reading. The resolution authorizing city manager to enter into a partnership agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency, Office of Community Development participate in the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program known as CHIP for the City of Columbiana.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, we call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Resolution number 22 dash R dash five, nine, five, first reading. A resolution repealing resolution 21 dash R dash five, seven, zero effective May 2021, which declared the necessity of installing certain improvements to portion of the City of Columbiana and assessing certain tracts of land to be benefited through the installation of such improvement.
So move.
Second.
Second.
That one I did write the title on.
With that clarification? Call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Banner?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Anyone either electronically or here in the room that would like to make a comment at this time? Public comments? Okay, hearing none. Do you have any council comments?
I've had one in particular. At the beginning of COVID, we passed an ordinance which allowed vendors to put items outside of their stores to try to attract. And now I think we've moved through the COVID thing. We have two or three stores, at least in town, where there is a whole lot of stuff that never seems to move. It just sits there and it looks awful. And I think that we ought to do something to clean that up and get them to put the stuff back inside the stores at this point. So something to consider for a future meeting, I believe. I think everybody should drive by. The place I think is probably the worst is the one on the corner of Friends Street and Main Street that used to be the old hallway department store. And then the other one is the one over just as you get through the square heading east on the right-hand side. Both of them have stuff that just sits out all night long, all the time. And I think it's time for us to get back to the way things used to be. So for a future meeting.
Do we want to, do we want to completely think about repealing that or?
I mean, it could, it could be something like simply requiring everything to be put away at night. And then if they want to put it back out in the day, then okay, that's okay. But we got to do something because it just looks bad.
No, I agree with you there. But I guess, I guess my question is, in, when we, when we pass that, do we also pass the ordinance of the sandwich board signs and little tables out front?
Well, the sandwich board signs, little tables was a, not even a resolution, it was a motion that we did. But actually we, we're.
You extended that, right?
We never rescinded it. We actually extended it.
Right. That's what I said. You extended that.
Okay, so those were separate.
Right.
Okay, fine.
And I know we're working on potentially changing that to make it permanent. But I don't call an ordinance, was that an ordinance or was it just another motion? For allowing stuff?
Yeah, I think it was at the same time during, during those times.
I mean, we could, we could obviously prepare legislation to change that. If it was done by motion, another motion, if it was a resolution, resolution repealing it or a resolution eventing it. But you should probably do it through some type of, you know, formal action.
I don't remember what the action was.
We'll have to look it up. I think it was in June of yeah, it was one 2020.
The old hallway building, I think, is also in violation of our signed, or sign ordinances. They have multiple signs all over the side of the building and usually they're basically separate signs for each of the vendors in the place. So it's, you know, you let one person get away with it and pretty soon everybody's going to be doing it.
Any other comments?
I just had one point of order about the, the issue with the Salem Regional Hospital with the bonds. You'll see a public hearing set in the City of Salem later this month. Believe it's the 19th of April, 6:45 at Salem City Hall for City of Columbiana and Salem. So it's not a typo. It's not a Facebook joke. It's, it's real.
Just so that everybody understands, since you didn't put me on the spot, I was all ready for it. So. It's going to give it to us anyway. Here's my two cents worth anyway. Basically, since a facility is being built in Columbiana, we are considered what's called a public hospital agency. So is the City of Salem. However, the City of Salem, not the City of Columbiana, is issuing bonds. And they're referred to in the legislation, series 2022 bonds that are going to finance and refinance construction of certain hospital facilities, including the new facility in Columbiana. So we basically will be joining with them in an agreement. The third party to the agreement is Salem Community Hospital Corporation. However, we are not at all responsible financially for any obligation, debt obligation, i.e. bonds that are issued in order to finance construction. That's, just want to make sure that's clear. But Lance is right. Part of this process is that there has to be a public hearing and that is scheduled for the 19th during Salem's city council meeting.
I want to clarify, was that actually a joint meeting? I wrote, so we have to be there too.
It's a meeting on our behalf.
On our, yeah, yeah.
I don't think you have to attend.
No.
Yeah, I did have that.
We'll be right here.
Could do it over Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? I'd just like to say that Bob Bischel is here with us tonight, former city councilman. Bring back good memories, Bob. Well, thanks for coming by tonight. Appreciate that.
Bob also spent quite a bit of time on planning commission before he moved to council.
He did it all. And he did a great job. Very, very good. Very good to have you back. Any, any other comments from anyone? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Moved. So moved.